We're going to call the meeting to order.
It would be easier to move around.
To clarify, the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, et unum.
Did you unmute that?
Is there a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? No. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent's consensus items be approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There's a two-minute time limit.
Anybody? Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
New business resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of labor, Robert Henry, be accepted effective October 22, 2022. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Henry for his 15 years of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of cleaner, Marian Thomas, be accepted effective October 28, 2022. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Thomas for her seventeen and a half years of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the employment of provisional payroll clerk, Kathleen J., be terminated effective September 2, 2022. Note, Ms. J.'s last day of employment was September 1, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of microcomputer repair technician, Dylan Tylock, be accepted effective October 4, 2022. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Tylock for his year of service to the district.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something if you don't mind. This recommendation is absolutely being made under duress. Dylan, you've done a fantastic job for us, and we really appreciate your efforts. You started here as a summer helper, and you transitioned pretty quickly into a very valuable member of our team. We wish you well in your new endeavor, and stay in touch.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Andrea Sawicki be granted tenure as a special education teacher effective October 31, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
Congratulations. We'll be coming back in May when we celebrate tenure, and there'll be cake, and hopefully you'll be bringing a third member of your family.
Oh, nice. Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jamie Bukowski be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective September 7, 2022, and ending March 6, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Gordon Donnie Rogers be appointed on probation as a bus driver effective September 7, 2022, and ending March 6, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level nine, step three. Note, Gordon is currently a substitute driver for the district.
Second. Oops, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Patty Dallas be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective September 7, 2022, and ending March 6, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one. Note, Patty is currently a substitute attendant for the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, clerk typist Amanda Pachusinski be transferred to secretary to the director of finance effective September 22, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, all ETA members be appointed as home instructors for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of books be accessed from the GLP library and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, 58 algebra textbooks be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. The books are out of date and have no value.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bid for theatrical electrical work at the middle and high school be awarded to CIR Electrical Construction Corp. in the amount of $735,500. $668,600 for the base bid, $39,500 for the alternate number one tormentor bar in lights, $14,200 for alternate number two projector, $13,200 for alternate number three motorized projector screen.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2022-2023 substitute rates be adjusted as follows. Managers, cleaners, teacher aides, bus attendants, laborers, and clerk typists, $14.70 per hour. Custodians and technology substitutes, $16.70 per hour. Bus drivers and registered nurses, $18.70 per hour. Eden CSD retired bus drivers, $20.70 per hour. Uncertified substitute teachers, $135 per day. Certified substitute teachers, $140 per day. Retired Eden teachers, $145 per day. Extended leave substitute teachers, 21 through 89 days in same position, $145 per day.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation routes be adjusted as per the attached.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. HLA 2500 snow pusher, asset number that. Rear attached snow blower, asset number that, serial number, and an eight-foot truck plow, no asset number. It is very old and rusted.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Motion carried.
Business report.
The first part of the business report is going to be given by Charles Trattier from Dressher Mylecki CPAs. He's going to talk to us about the audit that was just performed.
Thank you, Laura, and thanks, everyone, for having me to give me the time to come and present the results of the audit for the year ended June 30, 2022. So in front of you right now, you have a presentation. We just went into more detail at 6:15 with the audit committee. But I'll try to go pretty quickly through this one. Feel free to ask any question. I'm the senior manager on the audit this year, Nicole Ruff, is the partner. She couldn't be here today. But our information's at the back of the presentation if you have any questions later on. We're free. And so we are currently in draft form. It's final draft. There's just one set of reviews to be done at our office. Any questions after this presentation that could go into financial statements, they'll be set to be approved at the October 12 meeting for final approval, with the deadline being 10:15. So just quickly going through the presentation here, the first slide there is on the products of our audit and what you're going to expect from our package. The first one is the basic financial statements. It has, it's the big document. It's 90 pages long, and it shows the financial activity and the results of operation of the district as of June 30, 2022. In there, there's three opinions that come from us on our letterhead. Everything else is the property of the district itself. So those three opinions that you look forward to every year, the first one is on the financial statement themselves that they can be relied upon, and they can. They are free of material misstatements, so you do have an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest opinion you can receive. There's other, there's two other opinions at the back, essentially that we review internal controls and that we didn't notice any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report on, which, once again, is the best opinion that you can get. And the last opinion is on the uniform guidance, which governs your federal awards and the spending of your federal money. We act as agents of the federal government in that case, and we follow their guidelines to make sure that you spend the federal money in accordance with how the federal OMB department says to. And based on the samples that we did test on the ARPA funds this year, it's always a rotational basis of which programs we test. ARPA was tested, and there are no question costs, and so there's no deficiencies to report on. So all three opinions, you have the highest level opinion you can get there. So clean audit throughout. Management letter, it serves as a best practice, so we're to consider issuing some best practices out there. Discuss those with the district, but there are no deficiencies in internal controls or any deficiencies that we've noticed that through our audit that's to be reported in this management letter. So a clean management letter there. Auditor communications, that's another letter that has our required documentation as auditors to the audit committee. We went through those in detail the earlier hour, but the form and content of your financial statements is going to be the same as it was in prior year, so no surprises for the full board here. And the last bullet is the extra classroom activity report. We follow New York State guidelines to audit the extra classroom on a cash-based accounting, which is a basis different from your financial statements where it's money in, money out. There's often some low discrepancies in extra classroom with some younger students having controls over cash, but really clean audit throughout extra classroom activities. The deficiencies, if any, were very, very few, so very clean extra classroom audit on behalf of the students and the advisors and central treasurer, clean throughout. On the next slide, some of the financial highlights. We focus on the general fund, obviously. The, it shows a five-year trend of your revenues and your expenditures. The blue line is dictated by revenues. The red line is your expenditures. So anytime your revenues exceed, the blue line exceeds your red line, you're generating fund balance. So as you go to the far right, you see in 2021, 2022, under audit, your revenues were $31.2 million, your expenditures were $29.5 million, so you generated $1.7 million of fund balance this year. Usually, we like to compare how we did this year compared to last year. It's tougher to compare with the last two kind of COVID years. But if we take a look at last year, which was kind of split where expenditures exceeded revenues, that was mainly because the resolution was approved to transfer $3.3 million in December of 2021, or in December of 2020, for the capital projects. So if you reduce that $3.3 million transfer that happened under, well, two years ago now, but one year for audit purposes, your expenditures increased $800,000 from the prior year. $275,000 of that was employee benefits, your health insurance, which is always one of the more variable costs out there. $135,000 of the increase was for transportation, which, considering where you were last year with being, with having some transportation costs obviously reduced, $135,000 is very well-controlled considering you were more full go this year. And then your, your third area where expenditures increased was instruction, $330,000 of the $800,000 increase, but that's just a 2% increase, follows right where inflation is one year over another. So very well-controlled costs on the expenditure side of things. Your revenues increased $950,000 from the prior year, $460,000 of that was sales tax. Sales tax has been strong for two straight years now. It definitely outperformed expectation, not only Eden School District, but all the other school districts that we audit, and we do a number of them. I believe we do over 20 as a firm, and all the municipalities that we've audited as well. So there's some fear out there of how sales tax is going to go. So whereas your revenues did increase $950,000, you are one year away, just in sales tax itself, to losing that $950,000 gain if sales tax has a negative, that's some of my fear. But that's all forecast, it's nothing I can speak on. It's all about what the market's going to do. So just, just as a five-year trend, your revenues are growing at a rate of 2.8% annually. Your expenditures are growing at a rate of 3.7%. So over the five years, your expenditures are outpacing revenues a little bit, so something to keep an eye on for the future. And if I were to be the state OSC, and a lot of people are going to ask questions, how much fund balance do we have? We have too much, too little. The OSC wants to see a trend like that, which is Eden School District is in a strong, stable condition, or yes, you had three good years of, you were fortunate to have some budgetary savings, or revenues came in a little higher than expected. And so from 2017 to 2020, you had revenues outpacing expenditures, but you're required by law to maintain a specific level of unassigned fund balance, which is available for free use, and that's 4%. So any money that you generated in those three years were placed in reserves, and you appropriately used those reserves in 2020, 2021 last year, when you approved that capital project payment for that transfer. So that's how businesses are designed to be. You have strong, you have good years, you have fortunate years, you put that excess into reserve, and then every other year, or down the year after two or three good years, then you use those reserves, and that's exactly what Eden Central Schools did in this case. So strong, financially stable condition there. On the next slide, you get to see the breakdown of where total fund balance is. At the end of this year, you have $15 million of total fund balance, but if you look at the blue portion, the unrestricted portion, only $4 million of that is unrestricted. You have $10, $11 million that's restricted in legal terms, based on legal restrictions for future use, whether it's capital projects, whether it's retirement, whether it's tax surchiery, whether it's for future buses, those dollars are earmarked and can be used for free use. And so the increase of $1.75, $1.75 million that I talked about this year went directly in those reserves, that blue portion. On the next slide, that breaks down the unrestricted portion, which gets even further broken down into what's unassigned and what's assigned for future use. You're assigned for future use is your red column there. That's what's appropriate in next year's budget. So the year that we're currently in, 2.063, was appropriated as fund balance to balance the cost, and $700,000 was encumbrances, which are POs that were issued the prior year but are to be paid with this year's budget. So those just get rolled forward into New Year's budget. The blue portion is your unassigned, what is available for free use, and that is only $1.3 million, which is only a $100,000 increase from five years ago. Once again, school districts are not as fortunate as other types of municipalities where you actually have to abide by a law, New York State, New York Property Tax Law, Section 1318, which requires you to maintain only 4% of available unassigned fund balance. And on the next slide, that's what you'll see. You see your compliance with that section of the law. So you stayed under the 4% again this year, where you're able to replenish that $3.3 million capital reserve that you used last year. You were able to set money aside for future use, legal use. So that's, that's, that's really it for the bulk of the presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them, but we're available now or we're available through October 12 before these are formally approved.
Thank you, Charles. Now on to the business report. I wanted to inform the Board of Education that in 2020, we entered into agreement with NFHS cameras, which streamed our athletic events that were at home in our complexes, and it was a service that families had to pay for a subscription to be able to see. We have terminated that agreement, and we have migrated to the Huddle system, which allows our families to stream the home games free of charge. So there'll no longer be a streaming fee for family members to watch their children and grandchildren at the sporting events. That's all I have for this evening.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just to tack on a little bit to what Mrs. Feldman said, so the switching over to Huddle is certainly a benefit to our families, but it's also a benefit to our athletes and our coaches because of the amount of film that particularly those who want to play at the next level are able to, to collect and disseminate to any of those coaches who may be interested in recruiting them. We made a switch away from Huddle a couple of years ago for, for good reason, and we were switching back for even better reasons. So I know that on the way in, Mr. Iwanko informed me that the picture was crystal clear tonight. I think tonight was the first time we used Huddle, right? And it, correct? Livestreamed? Okay. And all went well, and captured some outstanding action by our, by our athletes. There we go. Thank you. All right, moving on to my report. We are exactly two weeks away, two weeks into having students in school full-time, and it's been absolutely fantastic. It just, it's what it should be, and it's really been wonderful getting back to our core mission, educating students. We've had open houses, we've had, we're in the midst of Homecoming Week, of course. We've had a full slate of athletic events that was just mentioned, but the best part for me is seeing our hallways, our cafeterias, our classrooms, our buses filled with children, and the students are happy to be here, right, students? Well, okay, that's a fair answer. Thank you for the honesty. Very smart of you to be here early in the, in the quarter of the semester, but it's been fantastic, and I, you know, I'm really proud of, of how far this district has come in a short period of time, and again, focusing on our core mission of educating children. Special welcome to Mr. McDonough, who is quickly acclimating himself in his role as high school principal. It's wonderful to have him aboard. A couple of updates for you. So construction update, but the first part's a little bit different than what you might be expecting to hear. A while ago, we talked about a drainage project that we were asked to be a partner with, with the town and the area county Department of Soil and Water. Our role really is to purchase drainage pipe to be, to, to, to be part of the removal and replacement of a faulty drainage pipe that runs across the outfield of our softball diamond. That is step one in a multi-phase project that's, that is designed to alleviate some flooding that's happening downstream, particularly in the, in the Eggle and Henry Farm areas. So we are, we are happy to partner with, with the different entities and to support those, those farms downstream. That work will be starting this week. If you've driven by the softball diamond over next to the high school, you'll see some flags there that's obviously denoting different areas that, you know, whatever utilities are there. So that will be happening this week, and the, the plan there is for the removal of the, of the disintegrated pipe and replacement with a new one, and re-soiled and reseeded, reseeded, so the, the field is back, back in place as it is right now. Okay. Moving on to our capital project update, Mr. Soffin and I had a very productive meeting with campus construction management, Young &amp; Right, Young &amp; Right, last week. We discussed our expectations and need for quality control, communication, and collaboration throughout the project, and that's especially as we move closer to the, the next construction season. Next spring and next summer will be much, much busier than we were this year, and we wanted to make sure that our expectations were very clear with our partners. You know, and this was just one of many meetings I had last week regarding the project. Our partners are working with our general contractor to repair and replace some of the issues that we've had with some install, particularly in the flooring area and our music rooms and our library. I just want the board to understand, the community to understand that we will only accept the best quality and the quality that we're paying for. So you should expect that some of those floors are going to be removed and replaced appropriately. Okay. A little bit of a COGEN update. As you're aware, the first day of school started out very interestingly and very, very much in the dark, because we had a total plant failure in the COGEN, which means that our, our two gas-powered generators, natural gas-powered generators and our backup diesel all failed. Our life safety generator failed the, the summer. The life safety generator is designed to support our coolers and freezers in our infrastructure and, and the tech area. That was repaired this summer. However, that opening day where we lost power led a very quick movement to bring on an 800-kilowatt rental unit, a diesel rental unit, and that is what has been supplying our middle school and high school with power since the beginning of school, and that, that rental unit is still on campus. We are set to transfer over to our repaired natural gas generators as soon as tomorrow, but the plan is to keep that rental unit on campus for the foreseeable future in case we run into future additional problems. Of course, the COGEN plan is due to come off offline as soon as we can get onto the grid. I'll talk about that in a second. We are still having some pretty major issues with our backup diesel. The problem there is that generator is 25 years old. They don't make parts for it anymore. Chad and our friends at Siemens have been trying to find replacement parts for it. The last I knew, we had two options. One would be to find that it's a possible part in France, but that's a, that's a maybe. So that, this is, we've gone international here, trying, trying to have backup power in the district, and the other is to have a part rebuilt through a company in Pennsylvania. So, so more on that to follow. So the good news is we, we have gotten a good response from National Grid. The infrastructure work will be underway, so that, that corner by the softball diamond is going to be very busy, because that's where we'll be installing an electrical pole in the very near future. That's one of the first steps in preparing for next summer, next fall's work, it's switching over to the, over to the grid. Once that pole, that pole is installed, and we'll have to do a little reconfiguration in just the corner of the fence there, then they'll start doing some trench work and bearing some conduit. So when, when that switchgear gets here, we'll be in good position to switch over there. Okay. Any questions about the capital project or the opening of schools? Okay. I'm going to take a few minutes, and I'm going to, Brandon, I'm actually going to try and share my screen, so you can coach me if I do this wrong, because I want to talk about the special education audit. And a couple of weeks ago, I shared with the board the full audit. And to give the audience and anyone at home a little bit of background, this past school year, we partnered with an expert in the field and her team to do a full audit of our special education programming. And one of the reasons that we did this is, is some of the work that I did on my entry plan led me to have some questions about how, about our, our special education program as a whole. This is not about individual instructors, it's not about students, it's about the totality of how we offer special, special education services in the district. And I had significant questions, which I've shared with the board in the past, and that led me to, again, partner with an expert in the field to really take a full look at our, at our, at our methodologies. What I'm sharing right now is what I've titled it as the, an executive summary of the report. The reason that I created an executive summary is because I want, I want to share the report with, with the staff in our district. the report with, with the staff in our district. I talked, talked about this on opening day. I told them that I would be sharing an executive summary. And that's really, that's really twofold. One, as you know, the full report is about 40 pages long. I want people to read it. You know, I want, and I, I think the likelihood of reading an executive summary is greater than reading the full report. Now, those who are interested after reading the executive summary, if they, if they want to read the full report, that will be made available to them. Okay. But I want to just go through a few highlights of, of the, of the report and in this case, the executive summary. And you'll see that I've got some things on here. This is, this is my copy of the executive summary. So you're going to see some things highlighted. You're going to see some things underlined and those are, those are the points that I want to highlight during my report today. So, you know, one of the goals of the audit was to identify the appropriate, appropriateness, appropriateness of the education provided to students with disabilities within the district. The findings reinforce that it's imperative that all students have an equitable and inclusive education with access to general education curriculum and education alongside non-disabled peers to the greatest extent possible. You'll remember that one of the goals that we adopted, this board adopted was about diversity, equity and inclusion. Inclusion can mean a lot of different things. In this case, it means including all of our students or providing all of our students where it's appropriate access to that general education curriculum. Okay. I did divide this or that the, the auditor divided the report into different sections. And the first was the district-wide systems for equity inclusion of all students. The takeaways are in italics are, are takeaways that, that I pulled from, from the full report. And where it's quoted, obviously that came directly from, from the full audit report. So key takeaway in this area, district should address misconceptions about students with disabilities and to better serve students with disabilities. It's imperative that all stakeholders have a common understanding of each disability category. Students with disabilities have better educational outcomes when educated with their non-disabled peers to the greatest extent possible. The district needs to define the services available to support SWDs, which means students with disabilities, and share common language expectations pre-K through 12. Resource room is often used to assist students in completing assignments, providing test accommodations and monitoring task completion, rather than providing specialized instruction that cannot be provided in the general education setting. So now, if you listen to those words or you, you read them for the first time, it might be a little bit alarming. The way I look at, at that is we, there's two issues inherent in that key takeaway. One, we need to have common language and a common understanding of what it means to be, you know, what, what it means to be a student with a disability and, and what some of those, somewhat, what some of those terms mean. And the second, the second part means we can do better. And we have an opportunity to be more inclusive. We have, we have an opportunity to use the fantastic resources that we have here in, in a way that's going to better support students. So I, I'm excited about both of, both of those areas because I think they are areas we can, we can address pretty readily over the next, next bit of time here. So, and again, the, the report is broken down, broken down in commendations, those things that we're doing really well. You know, for instance, administrators, teachers and staff are welcoming, appear to have a nice rapport with students. Facilities are in close proximity to each other, which would lend itself to sharing staff if need be. The board, the, the, the goals that the board recently adopted and so on and so forth. And then recommendations, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I will go through the ones that I highlighted here. All involved better understand that, should have a better understanding and knowledge of SWDs, including in special education programs and services. So, you know, making sure that we're educating our own staff on these important areas. I, jumping down to number three, adopt a district-wide vertically integrated language and programming for SWDs. In a district our size, we absolutely should be vertically aligned. I mean, we can almost reach out and touch each other, you know, from, from building to building. We're not a big district that needs to bring a lot of people together. We need to get fewer, we have fewer people to get, to get together, but they all, we all need to be communicating in the same way. Now, there seemed to be confusion about the differences between the consultant teacher model and the integrated co-teaching model. And, and I can tell you, there is a difference there depending on what building you're in and what things are called. But that doesn't mean that the actual model is different. I've experienced that, that myself, actually. The district will benefit from common language and consistent vertical programming. The current continuum of special ed services does not offer maximum flexibility or a variety of options to support appropriate program. Now, when you read that last sentence, it might be easy to conclude that based on our size, of course, we can't offer maximum flexibility, but our goal is maximum flexibility and we utilize the assets that we have here to get there. Okay. Adopt a district-wide social emotional program to develop a foundation for school atmosphere that promotes and supports equity, diversity, inclusion. I can tell you that some of what I shared on opening day is that we already, we already starting to put some things in place district-wide. Lauren Carter was integral in, in getting a grant for the pedals program, which is social emotional learning for our youngest students. Lori Gregory, who's with us here today, has worked on developing a partnership with Panorama, which is another social emotional tool that we'll be utilizing soon. So we, we, you know, we're in the infancy in both of those areas, but we're starting to build that infrastructure. Okay. So then moving on curriculum instruction. Key takeaways in this area. The audit team shared is the opinion of the audit team that individuals at the district are very committed to the safety and security of students with disabilities. This concern may have influenced some of the more restrictive placement decisions in an effort to shield SWDs from academic struggles. And then this next is, is a, is a quote that the auditors collected. This doesn't come directly from the auditors. But it says, we have, the full quote says something to the effect of, "We have a habit of saving kids through special education before, by providing a resource room or self-contained classes instead of looking at ways to make the general education site more accessible." What that says to me is that we've made a lot of heartfelt decisions here out of general, genuine care and concern for, for children. And you're going to hear me say this a little bit later again, and, and while I'm all for protecting children, if we're built right as a public school system, we protect them by offering them the right program, programming, challenging them at the right level and supporting them. And if we are such a caring environment, then we can do that. And I know we are. That was one of my first takeaways from, from moving about this district is there's a great relationship and rapport between the adults and the, and the children. And if you haven't heard me say it, that starts right from the time they get on the bus to the time they get home. So at every level in this district, we have people who care about kids. That puts us in a great position to truly challenge them. Because they're going to be supported here. We're not going to lose them. We're not going to, we're not going to let, let them, let them slide by. Okay. So, and that's where, you know, obviously I, I just said, I'm going to say, say it again, determine whether SWDs are held to high expectations. You know, that they're expected, we should have high expectations for all of our students. And then build the supports and, and, and have the supports in place to help them get, meet those high expectations. Jumping down to number three, review existing curriculum PK through 12 to evaluate accessibility of materials. Our instructional material is differentiated that students with disabilities are afforded accessible materials. And that's, that'll be a little bit of a heavier lift. That'd be a bit more of a change in, in practice here. But it's one that we'll, we will get to over time. Instructional methods employ, employed by teachers. Our teachers provide instruction to meet the needs of all students. Interesting there, but even before I got here, we started really pursuing Kagan strategies. And, and, and that is taking, taking hold more and more in the district. That's a, and the Kagan strategy, Kagan strategies along with explicit instruction were two areas the auditors pointed out that our, our district had, is, is developing a nice nuance with. And, and those are two, two of the number of strategies that we'll, we'll need to utilize going forward to make sure we're meeting all students' needs. And it comes down to, and I said this to, I said this on opening day. I'm not going to ask you to do things differently and just expect you to be able to do that. You know, it comes down, it comes down to training and, and professional development. It comes down to reviewing what professional development's been provided previously and, and what professional development we need to, to provide going forward. That does not come out with, that does not happen without a monetary investment on, on behalf of the district. Okay. All right. We, we have great, we, we have great infrastructure in terms of technology here. We need to start utilizing that more to benefit our students. For, for example, there's technology that can, that can free up our, our human capacity in the area of test read. Right now, it's pretty much a one-on-one adult, whether it's an aide or a special ed teacher, reading tests to students rather than using some of the technology that's out there. That's, that's going to be a professional development piece that we, that we need to look into. And, you know, there may be some infrastructure things that we need to adopt it at the different schools as well to get there. And of course, you know, again, training to, to support those instructional practice that, practices that support inclusive learning. Okay. Moving on, special education placements, really talking about the least restrictive environment. The audit team found an irregularly high number of self-contained classrooms at secondary level, which was disproportionate with the number of self-contained classrooms at the pre-K through six levels. The district must consider if the students placed in self-contained classrooms are placed in the least restrictive environment. I happened to observe a co-talk classroom today and, and it operated as it should. There were, there were identified students and, and general ed students in the classroom together. As an outsider stepping into that room, I didn't know who was who, nor should I. And both, both instructors worked together and, and that's the way it should be. We need, we need to develop opportunities for, for more of that in the coming years. Okay. I'm going to move on here down to number four, examine and refine the continuum of services provided by the district. Evaluate the current special education programming with a critical lens and determine if the district can offer equitable access to the general education curriculum and if students are educated with children who are not disabled to the largest extent possible. What that says in, in a, in a more succinct way is, are we offering inclusive education as much as we can? You know, are there opportunities at every grade level and every core course area for, for students with disabilities and general education students to be educated side by side? And that should, it should be uniform across the district. As said just a minute ago, we have certain services, certain options, pre-K through six, maybe a little bit in the seventh grade, maybe a little bit less than eighth grade, and then there seems to be pockets where, where we don't have, have these opportunities. And that shouldn't be the case. Okay. Again, it talks about resource room and how we might be able to better utilize that time to, to more fully support students with disabilities. And then the next section talks about multi-tiered systems of support, which you've heard me talk about quite a bit. And this, this is a really district-wide section here. The key takeaway, the district has a variety of processes for identifying students at risk, developing a plan to support students, monitoring the effectiveness, effectiveness of the plan and communicating with stakeholders. The names of these work groups differ by building. There's not one streamlined system in place pre-K through 12, but rather a series of disjointed systems with uncommon jargon. That happens in organizations that are heartfelt, that no work needs to be done. But there's no one really to oversee the alignment. And that's what's happened here. Right? We have a system at our primary building. We have a, a system that's similar but different at our elementary building. And we are developing a system really in year two at our secondary building. And the goal now is to get all three of those systems aligned. And the example that I used with the admin team just last week is, if I'm a parent and I have a student who starts at GLP and moves on to EE and then moves on to the, the middle school and the high school. Do I, should, should you expect me as the parent and my child as, as the student who maybe have some difficulty to learn a new system and a new, learn a new language every time we have a transition? Or should the professionals be in alignment to serve the students and the families of this district? Easy answer. Right? Easy answer. And we, and we will get there. We have people in place now. Again, you know, Lori's here and she's been doing a great job with the secondary level and, and instructional capacity about what MTSS has. Lauren and Kelly understand where, where they need to realign some things. By the way, you know, I, I, I did work with, with Lynn Schwartz and Chris Pollak, who's the ETA president and Chris is, is the department chair for the special ed department. They've seen the full audit. They've provided me some feedback, which is included in this executive summary. We may need to take a hard look at our, at our RTI program as a whole, and the audit talks about that as, as well. The last time it was really looked at was 2010. So I think we've had a couple of changes in, in the world since then. So you may see some bigger work happening in, in that area as well. Okay. So again, adopt a common language. Consider housing the PBIS, which has to do with behavior and RTI, which has to do respond with a response to intervention under the broader MTSS umbrella. Okay. So that, that's like, the, the, the key takeaways and some of the recommendations that are included in the executive summary. Obviously, there's a lot more detail in the full audit report. And my goal is to share this, not my, not my kind of drawn up copy here, but a clean copy of this executive summary tomorrow with the staff. And hopefully they will read through it and then take a look at an opportunity to provide us some input through a really open-ended survey and have, have some of the responses back to us by the end of the month so that we can utilize those responses in a future planning. Okay. And, and really it's just some questions. What insights or spec, or perspectives would you like to offer? What suggestions would you make in areas that need to be improved? And that we can grow? How can the district provide support to facilitate some of the recommendations? And hopefully we get some good feedback there. Okay. Any questions from the board? There's not going to be a quiz either. So I mean, I know I threw a lot at you there. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I, I do value and really support the, the unification of an MTSS process. I think that works to the benefit of the students, of the staff, so that everyone's on the same page. I feel like that's an issue that's not just an Eden issue. I think a lot of districts function like that with different processes happening in different buildings throughout the district. So I think it's just, you're right. The transition should be smooth for parents. They shouldn't leave one building and go to the next with a totally different process. So.
Yeah. And so I, I, I agree with you. I mean, this is a, Eden is the fifth district I've worked for. I've worked for big districts. I've worked for another district this size. And where bigger districts may have an opportunity in terms of the, the number of personnel they employ. A district our size has the, has the, has, has the benefit of proximity. And, and the ability to communicate on a, on a deeper level and a much easier manner than, than say a Williamsville, who has to grab, gather all kinds of people together, where ours are, you know, we're, we're not even a mile down the road. So that proximity really should be to our benefit. And I know, you know, the administrative team recognizes that. We've had good conversations about that. And now let's, let's get some feedback from, from, you know, the other folks involved. Okay.
I, I just want to comment on this too. I, as I did read it all. There was some rain there the other day, so I sat through, but I, I gotta say, I felt it was very fair. I thought it was, I was really pleased to see that the auditors found that our staff, we have a bunch of very caring teachers, which I knew to be true, but it was great to hear an outside, you know, bunch of people say that. And, and also to point out that I think what they all need is a lot of support in, in professional development. If things aren't going perfectly, it seems a lot of people are frustrated because they don't know how to get there. So everybody has good intentions. I mean, I felt it as when I was a teacher here too. Sometimes you'd want to do things, but there would be so many challenges. You just didn't know what to do. So I feel that this was such a good process and a good starting point for us to improve our program. So I thought it was worthwhile.
I'm all set.
Okay. So now, board report roundtable.
Um, I just have a couple of quick things. I just want to echo what Jeff said. It's been a refreshing start to a school year. It's something we haven't felt in like the last two years. So for me personally as a teacher, it's been great watching my kids. I mean, they weren't super enthused to go back to school, but you know, they definitely like it much more. No masks, no distancing, no assigned seats and lunch and all of that stuff. So it was just, it's been great. It's, it feels good to be back to normal, quote unquote. Ellen was so kind to go to an Erie County Association of School Boards meeting and just in case anyone's interested, there's some conferences coming up for board members. One is a Rick Tims, which he's always interesting to listen to if I still don't walk away from those feeling like I'm super financially savvy, but I think I know some of, I know a little bit more than when I left. So that's coming up on, I just lost the date, November 3rd. And then there's a legislative breakfast coming up too, which is always interesting to go to if anyone's interested, but I will be at those too. And that's it.
So, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. I was so lucky to go. I was so lucky to go because no one wanted to go. It was opening night of the Bills game. So...
That's not why I couldn't go though.
No, but it was a really short meeting because of that. So, that was interesting. But the two things I just wanted to talk about was there's a district clerk workshop coming up. And the reason they're having that, it's like we, we're so lucky because we have Barb, who's very experienced. But you think of school districts that have really new district clerks. Who do they go to who are mentoring? So, this, they want to make an opportunity to get district clerks together so that people like Barb can share their expertise in, you know, a nice setting. And then there's also going to be a student leadership, leadership dinner. And they're inviting all student reps to attend. And they have a really good speaker. I think he was a student rep for a school board. And then he became involved and did he work for Chuck Schumer? Somebody, I can't remember who he worked for, but he really has moved up. And he's going to come back and talk to the students. And again, it's a good opportunity for the students to meet each other and see what other school boards do and how they are utilized as part of their boards. And I think they're even, like any of us, if we wanted to go to that, it's open to pretty much anybody. It's parents of the students and they wanted to make this a really nice thing. And then when they did the roundtable, it seems a lot of schools are interested or really promoting DEI this year, and they're having committees or school safety were the two big focuses. So, and the Buffalo Bills, that was, they were out the door.
Okay. The next regular Board of Education meeting is October 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And now, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thanks for coming.